तन्या रघुनितानी जी श्री अद्वेषा करण आदर्शी माता देव और पापा की जी ईक्की नाटक तन्या रघुनितानी जी श्री अद्वेषा करण आदर्शी माता देव और पापा की जी हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे रामा रामा हरे रामा रामा हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे हरे रामा 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 जयो निताय गोरंगा जयो निताय गोरंगा जयो निताय गोरंगा जयो निताय गोरंगा रामा 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 जयो जयो निताय जयो निताय जयो निताय जयो निताय जयो निताय जयो राधा 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 जयो जयो राधा राधा जयो जयो भगवान 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 जयो जयो भगवान लक्ष्मी भगवान भगवान
हरे कृष्णा, थैंक यू सो मच माता जी, इंट्रोवर्सी फॉर वंडरफुल कीतन। हरे कृष्णा, प्रणाम स्टेरियर डिवोटीज़। सो, वेलकम टू ओवर वेनेस्टी इवनिंग नेक्टर ऑफ़ इंस्ट्रक्शन सेशंस बाय हिस वन एस बी टीवन और महाराज। सो, हरे कृष्णा महाराज, धन्यप्रणाम।
हरे कृष्णा।
सो, महाराज इस हेयर बिंग गस। सो, वी वेलकम महाराज बाय चेंटिंग वन रोड ऑफ़ हरे कृष्णा महामंत्र। हरे कृष्णा, हरे कृष्णा, 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 हरे, हरे। हरे राम, हरे राम, 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 हरे, हरे। हरे कृष्णा, ओवर टू यू महाराज।
ओके।
हरे कृष्णा महाराज, हो आर यू डूइंग?
ये, आई ऑलराइट्स, सरवाइजिंग।
ओके, यस। वी आर डूइंग फाइन महाराज। इट्स द कोल्ड इस लाइक इंक्रीजिंग डे बाय डे। ये, इट्स वेरी कोल्ड नाह ये। लाइक आज यू सेड। आई थिंक इट्स इट्स ट्री, इट्स लाइक थ्री, थ्री डिग्री स्टेटस। ये, डेट्स डी लोवेस्ट वन। और इट इस मोर एक्सपेक्टेड टू गो डाउन इन लाइक नेक्स्ट फ्यू डेज़। देव लाइक प्रिडिक्टेड अन कोल्ड वेव। सो।
सो, यू प्रोबेबली गेट फ्रीजिंग?
वेरी फ्रीजिंग महाराज।
यू में, यू में एक्सपीरियंस सम स्नोइंग?
डसन यूजुअली स्नो, सो।
ये, होपन्य नॉट।
यस, महाराज, नॉट।
इट्स, डेट्स वेरी बॉल्स।
यस।
ये, ओके। सो, आई थिंक वी वर डी सेकंड वर्स, राइट?
यस, महाराज।
एंटाबी श्योर, बट आई सीकान्यो लागे। डेट्स वर इस लेफ्ट।
यस, सो, वी आर जस्ट स्टार्टेड डी सेकंड वर्स।
ओके, वी जस्ट स्टार्टेड। वी, वी रो, वी वर रीडिंग डी वर्स, बागवाड़ गीता वर्स, नॉ?
यस, महाराज।
ये, ओके। इन डी अबाउट कोटेड वर्स ऑफ़ बागवाड़ गीता, डी वर्ड्स डाइविंग प्राकृति रिफर्स टू डी कंट्रोल डी इन्टरनल पोटेंसी और प्लेजर पोटेंसी ऑफ़ डी सुप्रीम प्रेसन्टेड ऑफ़ पॉइंट। दिस प्लेजर पोटेंसी इस मैनिफेस्टेड अन शिमाटी राधरानी और हर एक्सपेंशन लक्ष्मी, डी गोद इस अन फॉर्ट्यून। व्हेन डी इंडिविजुअल्स जिवा सोल्स आर अंडर डी कंट्रोल ऑफ़ डी इन्टरनल एनर्जी, डी ओनली इंगेजमेंट इस डी सatisfection ऑफ़ कृष्णा और विष्णु। दिस इस डी पोजीशन ऑफ़ महात्मा। इफ वन इस नॉट अन महात्मा, इस अन दुरात्मा और अन क्रिपल माइंडेड पर्सन। सच मेंटली क्रिपल दुरात्मा आर पुट अंडर डी कंट्रोल ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड्स एक्सटर्नल पोटेंसी, महामाया। इन्डीट, ऑल लिविंग एनिटीज़ बिटन डी मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड आर अंडर डी कंट्रोल ऑफ़ महामाया, खुस बिजनेस इस डी सब्जेक्ट डेम टू डी इन्फ्लुएंस ऑफ़ थ्री फोर्म मिसरीज। अडिविका क्लेशा, अन सफरिंग कॉजेस बाय डी डेमिकोट्स सच अन थ्रॉट्स, अर्क्वेक्ट और स्टॉर्स। अडिबॉटिका क्लेशा, अन सफरिंग कॉजेस बाय अदर लिविंग एनिटीज़, ब्लैक इंसेक्स और एनिमीज़ एंड अडियात्मिका क्लेशा, सफरिंग कॉजेस बाय वन अन बॉडी एंड माइंड सच अन मेंटल एंड फिजिकल इन्फर्मिटीज़। डायवा बुदामा हेतवाहा। डी कंडीशन सोल्स, सब्जेक्टेड टू दिस थ्री मिसरीज़ बाय डी कंट्रोल डी एक्सटर्नल एनर्जी, सफर वैरीयस डिफिकल्टीज़। सो, दिस इस अन इंपॉर्टेंट पॉइंट, नॉट टू डू अंडरस्टैंड डी क्लेशास और डी थ्री फोर्म मिसरीज़, विजुअल लिविंग एंड थे ओह, इस एनकाउंटरिंग। नैक नाउ, यू सेड नॉट, इस अन फ्रीजिंग गुरगांव। नॉ, सो, डेट्स, डेट्स वन क्लेशा। इस अलसो बाय डी डेमिकोट्स, सो, इस अडिविका। सिक्स मंथ्स लेटर, एंड यू विल बी सफरिंग फ्रॉम हाई हीट। सो, इट्स अनदर एक्सट्रीम। सो, वी आर ऑलवेज नॉ, सब्जेक्टेड टू दिस। बट देन, देस नॉ वे हो टू ओवरकम। सेम लाइक, नॉ, डी फोर मिसरीज़ नॉ ऑफ़ मैटेरियल लाइफ, जन्ममृत जराव्यादी, देव कम। गिर नॉट आस्क फॉर डेम, बट देव कम। एंड, सो, दिस क्लेशास, देव कम। वी डू नॉट आस्क फॉर डेम, बट देव कम। नॉ, इफ वी आर थिंकिंग, आई डोन डिजरवेट। नॉ, देस नॉट, नॉट फॉर मी। देन, वी विल बी एक्सपीरियंसिंग डी मिसरी मच ग्रेटर। बिकॉज़ डी कंडीशन जिवा इस अंडर डी इन्फ्लुएंस ऑफ़ महामाया, सो, डी मोड्स ऑफ़ बुद्धनेस एक्ट। एंड देस नॉ वे हो डी कैन बी नॉ, ओवरकम, करेक्टेड। आस लोंग एट डी जिवा इस कंडीशन, देन, डेट वे, देन, इट्स गोइंग टू बी करेक्टेड। सेम लाइक अन पर्सन, नॉ, हो कम्स टू डी प्रिज़न बिकॉज़ यी आर कमिटेड डी क्राइम, देन, इन डी प्रिज़न, यी आर नॉट चॉइस टू व्हाट काइंड ऑफ़ ट्रीटमेंट यी वांट। यी गेस डी ट्रीटमेंट, नॉ, टू बी करेक्टेड। सो, डेट्स वर, इट्स कॉल्ड डी करेक्टिव, करेक्टिव इंस्टिट्यूशन। इस अन पार्पल्स ऑफ़। सो, डी जिवा, डी कंडीशन जिवा इस सर्टेन मेंटालिटी। डी कंडीशन मेंटालिटी इस बेस्ड ऑन डी अहंकार और डी फोर्स इगो। सो, बेस्ड ऑन डेट, देन डी जिवा अक्चुअली कैम हियर टू एंजॉय। सो, नॉ, डी जिवा इस लुकिंग फॉर डी फुलपैन ऑफ़ डी डिजायर टू एंजॉय। नॉ, टू डू डेट, टू करेक्ट डी जिवा, देन, डेट आर वैरीयस वेस्ट। टू, लाइक फॉर एक्सांपल, यू वांट टू करेक्ट सम्बरी। सो, यू करेक्ट सम्बरी बेस्ड ऑन योर स्ट्रेंथ। नॉ, सम्बरी वांट्स टू डू समथिंग, आई जस्ट से नॉ। आई एम डी बॉस, एंड यू विल नॉट डू इट। एंड देन, डेट्स इट। यू डोन नॉट टू वायर अबाउट, एक्सप्लेनिंग अन्यथिंग, जस्ट यू आर डी पावर, देन, यू डू इट। बट, देन, डी अदर वे इस बाय डी वे ऑफ़ इन्फ्लुएंस। सो, यू केयर अबाउट डी पर्सन, एंड, ही इस डिजायरिंग टू डू समथिंग रॉन्ग। सो, देन, यू फिगर डी अवे, हो टू मेक इम रिलाइज़, डी व्हाट यी वांट्स टू डू, इट्स रॉन्ग। सो, लाइक फॉर एक्सांपल, शापरापा, नॉ, ही, ही वास टेलिंग हिस ओन एक्सपीरियंस अबाउट, ही आर डी डिजायरिंग, डी स्मॉल चाल्ड टू पुट फिंगर, अन फिंगर्स इन डी फैन। नॉ, डी फादर, ही सो इट डी डेंजर थिंग। बिकॉज़ डी चाल्ड इस नॉ इडिया, नॉ, व्हाट, व्हाट डी नॉ रनिंग फैन कैन डू। सो, एंड, श्योर, नॉ, व्हेन ही सीज़ इन, ही कैन करेक्ट। बट, इफ यी डस नॉट सी इन, एंड डी चाल्ड वर्स रनिंग फैन, इट्स अन गुड चांस डी, नॉ, डी किट विल पुट डी फिंगर्स इनसाइड डी फैन। सो, टू प्रिवेंट डेट, देन, ही, ही वास नॉट सेइंग, यू कैन नॉट, यू कैन नॉट, यू मस्ट नॉट। बिकॉज़ देन, डी, फॉर सम चोल्ड्री, इट इवन इंक्रीजिंग डी डिजायर काइंड ऑफ़ रेक्ट टू डू इट। सो, देन, व्हाट ही डिड, ही, व्हाल्ड डी फैन वास रनिंग, ही स्विच इट ऑफ़। एंड डी फैन वास स्पिनिंग डाउन। नॉ, व्हेन डी फैन वास रनिंग क्वाइट स्लो, देन, ही टोल डी चाल्ड, नॉ, वी कैन पुट डी फिंगर्स इनसाइड, पुट डेम इन। एंड देन, सो, ही डिड। एंड देन, व्हाट हैपन, डी, डी ब्लेड, नॉ, लाइक निक, डी, डी फिंगर। एंड, इट वास काइंड ऑफ़ लाइक अन, मैं बिन नॉट, इट वास नॉट अन टेंटफुल, अन लाइक अन सरप्राइजिंग। एंड देन, बिकॉज़ यू आर टॉकिंग अबाउट चाल, चाल, डू, नॉ, डेन इंटेलिजेंट, सो, अंडरस्टैंड, ओके, इफ डी फैन इस डूइंग सो स्लो एंड निक्ड मी ऑन डी फिंगर, एंड, इट डिड डो अन्य हार्म, बट, इफ इट्स स्पिन्स फास्ट, एंड आई पुट डी फिंगर इनसाइड, देस अन गुड चांस यू विल कट डी फिंगर ऑफ। सो, शापरापा, देन, ही सेड, ओके, आई रिलाइज़। सो, बाय हीरिंग, बाय सीइंग, बाय एक्सपीरियंसिंग, समहाल वी आर टू रिलाइज़। सो, डेट्स वर डी महामाया इस डेट ड्रिंग टू अस। बिकॉज़ कृष्णा केयर्स अबाउट डी जिवा, सो, ही इस सीइंग हो टू टीच डेम, हो टू मेक डी एक्सपीरियंस, डेट व्हाट डी जिवा वांट्स टू डू, डी कंडीशन स्टेट, टू एंजॉय, इट्स नॉट वर्ड। सो, दिस क्लेशास, देव आर जस्ट डी टूल्स टू मेक, टू मेक अस, मेक अस रिलाइज़ इट। सो, इफ वी अंडरस्टैंड डी क्लेशास इन डी सेंस ऑफ़ डी मात्रास्पार्शास दुकंते या सितोष्णासुखा दुकादा, देन, वी आर नॉट डिस्टर्ब बाय इट। एंड, वी एक्सपेक्ट, ओके, इट्स विंटर, सो, नॉ, इट्स गोइंग टू बी कॉल्ड, सो, आई टू ड्रेस अप। इट्स समर, ओके, इट्स गोइंग टू बी हॉट, सो, आई ड्रेस अप वेरी लाइटली। एंड, नॉ, श्योर, नॉ, समथान इस गोइंग टू बी, नॉ, मोर हॉट व्हेन वी स्टिन, स्टिन ऑन डी सन। बट, नॉ, ओके, व्हाट टू डू? आई नॉट इट्स गोइंग टू बी हॉट, आई एक्सपेक्ट डेट, एंड देयरफुल, आई डोन वेफ टू सफर डी कॉन्सेक्टंस। आई एक्सेप्ट इट। एंड बिकॉज़ आई एक्सेप्ट इट, देन, आई कैन गो ऑन विथ माय वर्क, व्हाट नीड्स टू बी डून, बीइंग अनडिस्टर्ब बाय डी सिचुएशन, व्हाट्स गोइंग अराउंड मी। इफ आई एम नॉट प्रिपर फॉर इट, सो, देन, डी एक्सटर्नल सरकुमसनसेस विल अफेक्ट मी, विल डिस्टर्ब मी। सो, डेस डी अडिविका क्लेशा, सेम विथ डी अडिबॉटिका क्लेशा। नॉ, नॉ, मोस्किटोस आर डेयर, एंड बिकॉज़ डी आर मोस्किटोस, देन, आई कैन नॉट डू माय वर्क। एंड, नॉ, डी होल थिंग डिस्ट्रक्टेड बिकॉज़ डी मोस्किटोस। बट, आई कैन प्रिवेंट डेट, जस्ट पुट सम मोस्किट इन इट एंड कंटिन्यू डिंग योर वर्क। बी अनडिस्टर्ब, प्रिपर फॉर इट। और, नॉ, अडियात्मिका, क्लेशा। इट्स, डिजीज़, और, नॉ, अन्यथिंग अलस, जन्ममृत जराव्यादी। डोन गेट नॉट टू ओवरऑन बाय इट। नॉ, यू आर यंग, यू गेट अल्ट। यू गेट अल्ट, मोर प्रॉब्लम्स विल कम। एक्सपेक्ट इट, एंड देन, टेक अवेंटेज ऑफ़ इट। नॉ, वी कैन डू समथिंग डिफरेंट, इस अन लेस पेशन, एंड देन, यू कैन डू थिंग्स, सो, अन सच अन वे, सो, देन, यू अनडिस्टर्ब, एंड यू कैन कंटिन्यू डूइंग, नॉ, व्हाट यू आर सपोज़ टू। एंड व्हाट यू आर सपोज़ टू इस, देन, टू रिमैंबर कृष्णा। सो, दिस थिंग्स आर वेरी इफेक्टिव, वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट टू अंडरस्टैंड। इफ वी अंडरस्टैंड हो डी वर्क, वी अंडरस्टैंड हो कृष्णा वर्क, देन, वी कैन बी लेस डिस्टर्ब, एंड देयरफुल, फोकुस मोर ऑन व्हाट यू आर सपोज़ टू डू, रादर देन, फोकुसिंग ऑन व्हाट वी आर नॉट सपोज़ टू। सो, नॉ, वी आर डी, नॉ, वी आर रीडिंग डी सेकंड वर्स, सो, डेट्स प्रियमल टू इट, नॉ, अक्चुअली, व्हाट आर डी डी, डी एक्टिविटीज़, डेन, व्हिच वी शुड अवॉइड? बट, डी फोकुस इस नॉट ऑन डी एक्टिविटीज़, अक्चुअली, व्हाट वी शुड अवॉइड, आज वी वाल सी डी नेक्स्ट वर्सेस, डी फोकुस इस ऑन, एंड चेंटिंग डी होली नाम एंड असोसिएटिंग विथ डिवोटीज़। एंड, दिस थिंग्स विल ऑटोमेटिकली बी अंडरस्टूड। डी मेन प्रॉब्लम, कंफर्टिंग डी, डी कंडीशन सोल्स, डी रिपेटेशन ऑफ़ बर्थ, अल्ट, आगे, डिजीज़, एंड डेथ। इन डी मैटेरियल वर्ल्ड, वन इस टू वर्क फॉर डी मेंटेनेंस ऑफ़ डी बॉडी एंड सोल्स, बट, हो कैन वन परफॉर्म सच वर्क इन डी वे, इट इस फेवरेबल फॉर डी एक्सीक्यूशन ऑफ़ कृष्णा कौन्जेस्नेस? एवरीवन रिक्वायर्स पोजीशन सच अन फूड ग्रेन्ट, प्लॉटिंग, मणि एंड अदर थिंग्स, नेसेसरी फॉर डी मेंटेनेंस ऑफ़ डी बॉडी, But one should not collect more than necessary for his actual basic needs. If this natural principle is followed, there will be no difficulty in maintaining the body. So that's another point. Yes, now, we need, as long as we have the material body, then we need to maintain it. So yes, the maintenance is there, but we should not overdo it. We should not, we should do the, the minimum, or we can say the optimum requirement, no, whatever is needed for the body to be fit, for the gross body, for the subtle body to be fit. So then we can be focused on devotional activities. Now, no, there's a point that, well, in Bhagavad Gita, no, we have four kinds of people who are likely to take up Krishna consciousness. Now, one of them are people in distress. Right? But those people, they are already, they are very much, they are somewhat realized. For, for people in general, we see that when we, yeah, like you say on devotees, when the devotees are in uncomfortable situation, die in distress. So the first thing which will go is Krishna consciousness. Okay, I have no money. So now, I, so what should I do? So chant more Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna mantra and don't worry about anything else. No, that's the ideal thing, but that's not happening. Because, no, 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 you don't understand, I don't have money. So therefore I have to work harder to make money. And because I work harder, I don't have time to chant the holy name or to read the books. So this is actually due to lack of faith, lack of surrender. Which it's understood for the Kaneshta Dharikari, yes, it's there. But we have to, no, not forget to maintain it and develop it. Because the process of devotional service starts from shrada, it goes to prema. But shrada, no, is the minute beginning faith, which is very important for the Jiva to start the journey. And that should be increasing because each step progressively is more of the faith. So we start with the very minute faith, the, the journey to prema. But, and the prema is nothing else than a full surrender, full faith in Krishna, absolute. So everything in between is just progression. So that way, then we should, maybe now we have difficulty with it, okay, I have some difficulty. So I have to take care of it myself. All right, great, no, that's your understanding. But at some point, do understand that Krishna, he knows perfectly well, he knows better than you, what's, what's best for you. But you cannot explain it to a person who is not fully surrendered. Because, no, they will think you are some fanatic or, no, that you don't understand their situation. But if you look at now our own situation and then look, how bad is our situation? And then look, look at the situation, for example, that Panda was. What situation they had in Mahabharata? They didn't do anything wrong. In fact, they did everything right, but they were chased out of their kingdom for 12 years. And they had to suffer the consequences of what? Of being biased. So then, no, naturally, no, they should kind of like go to the court case, no, and then open it and then, no, do whatever, but you see, they accept. That's the devotee. And then after that, no, they didn't want to fight. But now, in Bhagavad Gita, then Krishna, he explains to Arjuna, well, you don't have other option. No, you have to do it. And why? Because I won't. So Arjuna understood perfectly well then what Krishna wants and thus, no, he fully focused on the desire of Krishna. So that's, that's the perfection. So we should be, no, working more on developing the faith. And that faith comes progressively, also as we see in the Upanishya Amrita. So that's what it is. First, working on our own body, our mind, our senses. And now avoiding and accepting things which are good for that and relationships. So having faith that yet I can do, having faith that if I cannot do something, but by association with devotees, I can also learn, I can do, or I can do something else to please Krishna. I don't have to be worried about it that, no, I'm completely useless. Nobody is completely useless. And nobody is completely perfect. Krishna is Bhagavan, nobody else. So we can do something little bit, but the little bit we can offer, no, to Krishna as our service, and that's the pleasing thing. Indeed, I don't know, the main problem, comforting that, no, that, that everyone requires positions such as food grains, clothing, money and other things necessary for the maintenance of the body. But one should not collect more than necessary for his actual basic needs. If this natural principle is followed, there will be no difficulty in maintaining the body. So yeah, the Ishavasa principle. According to the nature's arrangement, living entities lower on the evolutionary scale do not eat or collect more than necessary. Consequently, in the animal kingdom, there is generally no economic problem or scarcity of necessities. If a bag of rice is placed in a public place, birds will come to eat a few grains and go away. A human being, however, will take away the whole bag. He will eat all his stomach and heart and then try to keep the rest in storage. According to scriptures, this collecting of more than necessary at yahara is prohibited. Now the entire world is suffering because of it. So when we say overpopulation and people are starving, so it's not that there is not enough food produced. But it's not properly utilized. Like you see in, in America, the, I think, average family in a month, they waste around, I think, some hundred of kilo of food. It's just, it's there, so they're not just doing, they, no. The, when, when the prices of milk went down, so sometimes, no, the farmers as a protest, instead of utilizing, they just dump the milk in the ocean. Just as a protest. But that milk could have been very well used, no, in some places where there is a scarcity of it. So it's, the focus is on economics. If you want to keep the money, then, no, you keep the interest. If it's too much of it, then better just destroy it. Destroy part of it, keep it less, price is higher. But, so because of the economics, then the people are suffering the consequences in the form of hunger. Collecting and eating more than necessary also causes priyas or unnecessary endeavor. By God's arrangement, everyone in any part of the world can live very peacefully if he has some land and a milk cow. There is no need for man to move from one place to another to earn livelihood. For one to produce food grains locally and get milk from cows. That can solve all economic problems. Fortunately, man has been given higher intelligence for the cultivation of Krishna consciousness or the understanding of God, one's relationship with him and the ultimate goal of life, love of God. Unfortunately, so-called civilized man, not caring for God's reformation, utilizes intelligence to get more than necessary and simply eat to satisfy the tongue. By God's arrangement, there is sufficient scope for the production of milk and grains for human beings all over the world. By instead of using his higher intelligence to cultivate God consciousness, so-called intelligent men misuse their intelligence to produce many unnecessary and unwanted things. Dust factories, slaughterhouses, brothels and liquor shops are open. People are advised not to collect too many goods, eat too much or work unnecessarily to possess artificial amenities. Then they think they are being advised to return to a primitive way of life. Generally, people do not like to accept plain living and hiding. That is their unfortunate position. Now you see, no, people think that they like to live sophisticated life. But actually, they miss, misunderstand the word sophistication, they mistaken it with complication. So they prefer complicated life, thinking that the sophistication, but it's not. Like you see in Chennai, they, it was a city, it was well planned and everything was fine. But now they figure out that if we build more apartment, more houses, so we get more money. The density is more. What they forgot that they allowed to build the houses on the water reservoirs. So they filled some of them because they, they thought, they thought we don't need it. It's just unnecessary hassle, taking space. And build more of the complicated apartments. And then, now when drought comes, then you need water. But then, no, before it was planned, so there is enough water for the city to use at the time of drought. Now they made the city larger and they decreased the amount of the water which they kept for the emergency and there is no water. So you are supposed to be in very sophisticated, not living sophisticated life. Now, everything is, running water is there, electricity and then you have everything what you need at your disposal. But then you figure out that actually not sophistication, it's complication because now the water is not running. So you have the pipe from where the water should come, but the water comes once a day in the truck and then you have to use that. So the people in the village, no, who go and they can take from the well anytime they want, their life is more sophisticated, no, than that the one who is living in the city and has no water. Here's the pipe for the water, but has no water. Now Gurgaan is going to face soon something like that. No, there is, that so much water is being used that it's not being replenished. So then water, water table is running down. And I am not sure what, what solution they are having for that or they are thinking of. But once the water runs out, then what will you do? The city will be useless. You cannot have city without water. Some solution is found, no, so water will, will, will be very, very costly commodity. Because we are talking about economics, so it will be not money. So most likely just people will be buying some bottled water for everything. No, cooking, drinking, taking bath, no, and that's it. So what sophistication is that? What, what's the higher purpose of, what's, what's the higher, higher value of this kind of life? Rather than the life in the village where you don't have this problem. How about you don't understand, no, yeah, well, yes, it's difficult to understand. Yeah, okay. So do we have any questions?
Hare Krishna. Yes, we know trouble, Rashimathaji. Please go ahead.
Hare Krishna Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Maharaj, my question is that we have observed that in case of we are unwell sometimes. So the first thing that goes out is chanting properly and then the reading also goes. So because of our health, we are not able to do it. So what is there a way that, you know, we can train ourselves so that during that time when we are not well or, you know, if we are materially not fit, then during that time also we are able to, we know that chanting is most important, but the quality doesn't come at that time. We have faith, but still, you know, we cannot properly chant or read during that time. So how to overcome that situation?
See, sometimes you are unwell, that happens, no. There are vyadi, no, vyadi, diseases. So it happens, yes. And sometimes, no, when like having some severe headache or, no, no, severe temperature, it's very difficult to, no, do, say, anything like a spiritual reading book may, may be so painful for the eyes that you just don't do. At that time, it's also good, maybe the body takes rest, no, depends on what, what it is, the situation. But nobody can, no, deny you to listen. So if one is so unwell that he cannot chant rounds or maybe very bit difficulty, he cannot read or a bit difficulty, just listen, take it as an opportunity and listen to Shabraa Badan songs, listen to Shabraa Badan lectures. No, listen, listen to Shabraa Badan Japa, no. And maybe, no, you are so tired of falling asleep or, but at least kind of like just hear it. And because this is transcendental, this is shuddha satva. Disease put you into tamaguna. To come out of the tamaguna, you need the, no, satva guna to act or shuddha satva best. So therefore, no, take advantage of the, okay, you cannot do anything else. So this is the time for me to start listening more. So then just, just put the lecture, put the Japa or put the songs on and just listen. And you have the opportunity to chant with Shabraa Badan, no, or chant loud, chant softly, but at least hear it. And as you are getting better, then naturally then you should, you should grab your beads and then just start chanting. Always try to finish minimum sixteen rounds on the Japa every day. No, but if you cannot do, like sometimes, no, somebody may get into some coma or something. No, you cannot expect him to chant sixteen rounds on the Japa. But you can help him to, to leave the Japa on because the person, no, externally he may not be conscious, but no, actually internally he may be conscious. So he will be very much appreciating that, no, you are putting him the Japa or the bhajans because he can hear it, but he cannot respond to it. Same like a child, child in the womb, no, he cannot respond, but he's conscious. So exposing the child now to, to satva guna or shuddha satva, transcendental, then you are also relieving him from the suffering which he is suffering in the womb. He is then upside down, not so many things, no, actually they are bothering him. So there is a lot of suffering, he cannot do anything else. So that transcendental sound relieves him from his suffering. And then he becomes more appreciated. So then when he comes out of the womb, he will remember, like Parashiddha Maharaj. He was saved by Krishna and he remembered that for the rest of his life. Yeah?
Thank you, Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, do we have any more questions? Okay. Maharaj, I had one question. So like we also hear that, that we, we should, like, the, the first class is the one which simply learns by hearing. And there is a third class also which learns by experience. So, so, so like I consider myself to be one of the hard knocks where I don't even try to even understand by the experience also. So how do we come to that situation where we can learn by hearing?
See, it's, again, it's faith, a one of faith. If we have faith in the person who instructs you, then based on that, then even by hearing, you just take it. So now, but you cannot say that if you cannot hear by, or you cannot learn by hearing and you can only realize by experiencing, that's, that's worse. We are talking about realization. So after you get the realization, it actually doesn't really matter which way you got it, but you have realized it. Now realizing things by way of experiencing, it may be little bit more intense. But you had done it. Somebody, no, who had learned by hearing, so his experience of it was maybe less intense. It was more peaceful. But okay, he got it that and I got it by experiencing, I, I got it by seeing. It doesn't matter at the end. We got our realization. So we, we should be concerned about if we are not getting the realization even by experiencing it. So now then that should be concern of why not? What am I doing wrong? And generally it's based on the ahankar, no? I have some desires, I wanted to go this way, even though, no, the modes of nature are telling me, don't do it, no, this is not going to work. No, 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 you don't understand, I know best what to do, so I will do it my way. And no, we keep trying, but at some point we will give up. At some point, no, the, the stress of going through it becomes so much that we realize, okay, well, now I can actually say that I have tried everything and didn't work. So all right, now, now I listen. So please now tell me what's the best for me, what should I do? And then people listen. So eventually every Jiva learns. Now the question is how fast? So what we are trying to, to realize that we are not part of this material world in this lifetime. That's, that's our task. So as soon as we realize that, I know this body, I'm Jiva, then we can start asking the question. Okay, if I'm Jiva, then what am I supposed to do? Now I know who I am. But the next question is, and what am I supposed to do? Then we hear about devotional service. Then we hear about devotional service. So then I can focus on that. And the pleasure of doing devotional service is great, is greater than the pleasure from getting satisfaction from the material energy. So the Jiva naturally focuses on what the natural for it. For the Jiva and forgets about the other inferior enjoyment. Yeah?
Yes Maharaj, thank you so much. And I had one more question actually. So like you also mentioned in the session that we should try to remember Krishna always. Like eventually you said that, right? So we also hear that multiple number of times. But what is, how do I practically understand what is the meaning of remembering Krishna all the time? Like if I'm working and if I'm there, I am not chanting all day. So what is practical for me to, like what is the meaning of remembering Krishna all the time?
See, learn to appreciate, now the. Learn to appreciate the material world as expansion of Krishna's energies. So seeing it as the energies of Krishna, we understand it's Krishna. So for example, when you go to your place, to your work, first you are in apartment, right? So then, when it's cold, you can heat up the apartment. When it's hot, you can cool it down. When it's raining, no water comes in. So why is that? The Krishna's energies now help you to maintain the comfort which you need for your life. So be thankful. Krishna comes here in the form of electricity. And then, okay, I can use it for heating, I can use it for cooling, I can use it for whatever I need. So thank you Krishna, I'm very much appreciative of it. Then you go down and now you are walking. Now how come you walk? And because it's a marble floor, so I walk on it. But it's not that the marble is holding you, what's holding you is Krishna potency. So there's a potency of Krishna, there's sankarsha. And he's manifested and then he holds the whole universe, universes. So he has also expansive, not holding you, so then he can walk and not fall through. So every step you can be appreciative of Krishna. Now due to his potency, I can walk on the surface. You sit in the car and then you are going and how can you can go? Right? So when there's the engine and combustion or whatever, diesel, petrol. And because of that, and I just turn on the engine and it goes. But how is it? There's an energy which comes from the fuel. And it gets transmitted onto the wheels which move forward. So you can move. It's Krishna's energy in the fuel which moves the car. The car is just the machine which transforms the energy, that's all. If there is no fuel in the car, you don't move, as simple as this. So when you are going in the car, you can appreciate Krishna, due to Krishna's energy, then you can actually move. You should not think that I have money, I buy petrol and therefore the petrol is mine. No, petrol is not yours. You are simply borrowing it for exchange of something, but you are going to use it for your own purposes. But you cannot make it as such. So we should not never be proud that, no, I'm making energy. No, you are transforming one energy into another thing. Because even the petrol is a transformation of energy, is the sun, sun's energy transforming to liquid. Wood is another, is a transformation of sun's energy into solid stuff. So it's full of fire. But it's not visible, only when you put the wood, when you burn it, then you see that the energy of the sun comes out. You can appreciate that. So at any moment, you can actually appreciate, when you are drinking water, then you can think of Krishna, wow, this is the taste of Krishna. So every moment you can be appreciative. Now we are having Zoom conference, right? So everybody is somewhere else, but we are talking to each other. So how is it possible? And you can sell radio waves or internet and this that I manufactured, I discovered. But it's all based on the law of nature. You can see the physics law or whatever, we just utilize that to do something. But only because Krishna allows it to be happening, then it happens. Somebody finds the way how to utilize it and he claims I am the one who discovered it. What did you discover? Yeah, okay, you utilize it, but the people they wanted, now I patented. For what? So I make money of it. It's all about money. I don't want to give people anything for free. I want money. So now the whole world runs on money, which is very wrong. Yeah?
Yes Maharaj, thank you so much. It was a very wonderful answer and pretty much practical for everybody of us. Thank you so much Maharaj, thank you so much.
Okay, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna Maharaj, thank you so much. So we thank Maharaj by chanting one round of Hare Krishna Mahamanta. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Thank you so much Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So thank you so much everybody for joining the session. So we end the session here. Hare Krishna.